All right, so we will start today with, we're gonna debrief on, we had a few presentations of the budget. I think Boylston's got canceled.
Yeah, so we really, we were supposed to, and it got postponed to January 30th.
Okay, yeah, right, exactly, yep, that's right, that was random. So, but you guys did present in Berlin, so how did that go?
Oh, for the capital plan.
Oh, the capital plan?
Yep, we, just the capital plan.
So that's all you've presented so far?
Correct.
And Carol presented in BEF, and it went well?
Yes, BEF.
And I felt like Berlin went well, too.
Yeah, oh, the capital plan was fine, they were fine with that.
So people were just like...
You know, we expressed what we needed, I don't think, we didn't get tons of feedback, but there were many questions, it was pretty, pretty easy, you know, they were, yeah, very, it was simple.
All right, so I think next week, the 30th, we're gonna, or you guys are gonna go in the morning to present to the Select Board and the FinCom in Boylston.
What do you mean, in the morning?
Nine to 10, isn't that what she said?
No. I thought it was 6:30. Okay, let's make sure, you're thinking differently?
I thought she said you need to come on the morning from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., and then go back at 6:30, wait, let me reread this. Okay.
I don't think they could, because if it's, if they're meeting, that's a posted, that's their meeting.
She says, "Good morning, ladies, traditionally in the past, Bob Conroy, the superintendent, came before the Board of Selectmen to present the budget information and have a discussion. If this is something you would like to continue, please let me know." All right, so we did that.
I'm not comfortable with that.
Wait a minute, maybe I read it wrong, I think you've been added.
It's at 6:30.
All right, never mind, maybe I got confused.
I know the FinCom will be there when we present. I was asking her, because I wasn't really clear, it's just different, every school system you go to, and how you coordinate with the towns, I have always been used to just presenting to the FinCom and not the Select Board, so I was, so I was just trying to get a read on the process.
Sure. So did you talk to, this was very confusing, did you talk to Eric?
I did.
Okay.
Yeah, we just went over briefly, the presentation, nothing, you know.
Right, information he wants us to bring to the table.
Yeah, just to kind of, to give me an idea on the process, he was helpful.
All right, I don't know why, I saw somewhere 9 to 10, that's weird, all right, whatever. I'll look at my email again, yeah, it says 6:30, right, sorry.
And Nancy and I will work on that presentation.
All right, I'll definitely be there, Jessica's planning to be there, I can text Mike and see.
Jessica?
Yeah, Jessica said she had it to her calendar.
Great.
Good, okay. So just let us know if you need anything from us on that.
And we may have some, it'll be Nancy and me, and we may have Janelle.
And I asked Dan.
And Dan, and perhaps Palmera, I might ask him to come with the technology side of that.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll have a good support group to come, so let me just make sure I put, I wanna get everybody's name again, so I don't forget.
Okay.
Janelle and Dan, right?
And then your meeting with Berlin, in February.
Is it the 8th?
I think it's the 8th, I think, that's what I have.
I think it's the 8th.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so Boylston.
And that's FinCom for Berlin.
So, and Boylston should be Board of Selectmen and FinCom, right?
Yes.
And then Berlin is February 8th.
Yep, 7:30 I think.
Okay. At 7:30, okay.
And they told you the warrant closes on the 13th.
For town meeting?
Yeah.
February 13th?
No, March, March.
Oh, March, sorry.
Oh, my gosh, whoa!
That's like, really quick.
Very.
That's what I was...
Couldn't talk, could you tell them, like, "Fuck!"
But if the warrant closes on the town meeting, when's our school committee meeting?
The day is the 28th.
The 28th.
Oh, February.
February.
Yep.
So then, if we make, need to make adjustments or whatever.
And then I think it's March 14th, yeah, so the budget meeting is the 28th, then we'll meet again, I think Julie wrote the 14th maybe, I think it was the 14th.
Okay.
But we'll do the vote on the 28th.
Yep.
Which I'm not concerned about, but yeah, the warrant, so it'll go on the warrant.
Is that the same in both towns?
I do not know.
I don't think so.
Well, so let me make...
I could be wrong, I didn't get a date from Boylston, but...
I can ask.
It seems like every town's different.
Yeah, you probably are.
But we should look, find out, obviously, yeah. You said the 13th?
Yeah, I just heard that. From Tim Wheeler, he's a really reliable source.
Actually, that's, probably makes sense, because then they have to nail it out.
Right.
And that does come, like, at least a month ahead of time.
Do you know the date of the town meeting by chance?
I do.
Ask it, that too, people have already started asking me.
I feel like it's the 8th, May 8th.
May 8th.
Is that?
6:30.
I saw the 1st?
Nope, I, I, there was a correction.
For Berlin, oh, let me see, Boylston though.
I think it's...
It's usually the same night.
I think it is, too, but, um...
Oh.
Usually it is the 1st, but then they sent out a correction date, so it's on the 8th now.
Hmm, okay. It just says first Monday in May at 7:00 p.m. for Boylston, but yeah, so I don't know.
Interesting if they have two different...
Boylston's next annual town meeting is tentatively scheduled for May 1st, 2023.
Oh, so that's different.
So it'd be two different towns.
No, that's May 1st and May 8th.
Two different town meetings.
It is two different town meetings.
But two different towns.
Two different days.
Yep.
So we don't have...
But usually they're the same.
Right, I remember you saying that, that you kind of, that would kind of make it, yeah.
So Boylston would go first.
I can, I'll confirm with Dawn, she's not there today.
So we need to know Boylston's deadline.
Mm-hmm, Boylston deadline and the date of town meeting.
Yeah, because they're a week earlier, so we better, yeah, yeah, so we gotta find out Boylston's deadline for the warrant.
Okay, yeah, so right now it's May 1st.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to confirm. Um, so then, Carol sent out the schedule, did you see that schedule?
What schedule?
Google form to sign up for.
Nope, I didn't see that.
Okay.
But that doesn't mean they don't have it. When did you send it, today?
Brenda sent it.
Brenda sent it.
Today?
It was a while ago.
Uh, last week.
Last week.
Friday?
I'll tell you when.
Now, this came to School Committee or private emails?
School Committee.
It was, um, January 17th, that was Tuesday.
Brenda, I got it. I didn't even say I didn't know who that was.
Oh.
Now I know.
It's our Brenda.
Yep, got it.
Yeah.
Okay, yes, perfect.
So, pretty much, we've got coverage, Carol, for everything on here, but Carol was just saying she wants to add 19 Carter, and, or you want to add the daytime stuff to the schedule too?
Yeah, I want to look at a date, after the meeting, we'll look at the, our calendars, I'm gonna set up, I'll reach out, I want to set up dates for coffee chats in the morning at the schools, or different areas, it could be the library, and just using those locations in the two towns, and then I want to go to 19 Carter, so we'll have to say, okay, we have these dates, what works for you, maybe we'll do 19 Carter in the afternoon, I'll see what they have going on, and see if we can kind of sit in on that.
That's great.
And then the other one is the Council on Aging here, which I don't know anything about, but we'll figure that one out. But let's find out when we're free during the days, first of all, so we know that, and I don't think, like, I think if we're in Berlin, Megan doesn't have to come to Berlin, it can be you and me, or you and me, or Bob and me, or the three of us, or we'll divide.
But I'll, yeah, and that, Mike's, I think, God bless him, he's trying to split his time, because I think he wants, he's been trying to come to the Boylston stuff, too, you know, being chair, and the Berlin, but I think if you and I, like, I think, like, looking at this, she's got the Tohonto, Jessica signed up for the Tohonto to go with Mike, you might want to...
What is it, PTO?
Yeah, you might want to go to that one.
It's a very small group.
Oh, is it?
It's like five people.
Oh, wow.
And I have covered the, um, school council coming up at Tohonto, and then the school, and then the PTO at Tohonto that night, so shortly after that one, that's coming up soon. And then I have the, on Boylston, is their first meeting, oh, actually, I'm gonna do both of them, I'll go to Boylston, and then I'll go over to Berlin, their first PTO meeting.
Oh, wait, it's the same time, February 2nd, Thursday, February 2nd, 6:30 to 8:00, Thursday, February 2nd, 6:30 to 8:00.
That's true, it's a short period of time, yeah.
Yeah, that's why, if the town vote is on May 1st, then that's kind of a nice done, there's the date it's done.
Yeah.
So this only, the only thing I had as a question is there is Thursday, February 2nd, 6:30 to 8:00, they're, so what are you gonna go to?
One, and then I'll go over to the other one.
Okay, gotcha.
I think Berlin starts a little later, I think they start at 7:00 now, is that right?
Boylston or Berlin?
Berlin.
Yes.
Because last time I went early.
Yes.
And that, and I was, nobody was there, and I thought, uh-oh, but I think it was, they started at 7:00, so I'll go, Boylston first.
And the Boylston PTO will be prompt, because they're in the library, and it's more of a formal meeting.
They're very...
Yes, they are very, yep.
Berlin's never, it's not prompt.
Yeah, no, these, these, this group is, they're very business.
Yeah, they are, yeah.
So.
So I reached out to the Council on Aging Director in Berlin to see if, but I hadn't heard back, but she, she responded back with something else, but not that, but anyways, 19 Carter is...
Evy.
Yeah, but that's, she gets a lot of that elderly population there, that go for things, they gather, they have frequent...
Well, that's what I'm thinking, let's see what they have going on, if it's a tea, or if it's something they like to have, maybe we can go in.
Right, yeah, that's a great idea.
Tea in Tohonto.
We'll bring it.
Tea, yeah, so that'd be fun, I would like to go over there, I'd like to go see the place, I haven't seen it in a couple of years.
It's beautiful.
They did so much work.
So much work.
Yeah, so that would be good, we'll go over and do that, I just have to look at my schedule before it gets busy.
Yep.
Busy.
All right, so this is good, so I feel like we're moving forward really well with this. All right, Nancy, did you have anything else to talk about with the existing budget?
Nope.
All right, we're good, okay, so we can move on to the cell phone tower. So Julie, I spoke with, oh, very exciting, yeah, I spoke with, I gotta get my notes, this man Ralph.
Ralph?
Just a homie, do you know him?
I know a guy, no, no.
Okay, so Ralph was involved, as Palmera told us at a previous meeting, the town had tried to get a cell phone tower, I guess the location was not near Tohonto, it was near Diamond Hill in Boylston, which is down 70.
Okay.
It's near the townhouse, and the residents voted it down, because it was too close to the townhouse.
And the fire station.
And the fire station, it's like the fire station, I guess that's where the town hall was.
Yeah, must, the white building must have been the town hall.
Yeah, yep. I didn't either, he said this is like 2006, too, I mean, it's a long time ago, so, pretty much, what he recommended, so two things, we talked about maybe potentially if this police radio tower that Boylston is trying to put in off of Stiles, if that could like double as a cell tower, and if we could place it in a different location, that would be more favorable to residents and the school, and he said that potentially could work, so we, it's a lot of work to figure that one out, but we, that, that's an option. The other option he discussed was placing a tower on the furthest corner of Tohonto's property, or in the East Woods off Mile Hill Road, which I'm not familiar with that part of town, so, but Motorola, essentially Motorola comes out, and they kind of scout out the location and say, yep, we can put a tower here, and has to do with, can they get, I was like, does it need electricity, he's like, yes, it does, so they have to like, dig into the ground and get the electricity and all that, the other thing is, cell towers are safety hazards, they can, pieces of equipment can shed from the tower, also ice can build up, because they're very high, and then it falls when it melts, can kill people. The other thing we have to worry about is the frequencies can cause, just like power lines, the 5, it's the 5G frequency, and again, I know nothing about this, so this is stuff that we would have to research before doing this, especially if we're putting a tower on the property of a school, where children are every single day, near fields, or kids can be practicing. So then I had thrown out the idea, and I told Carol about, I wonder if Tower Hill, who has like nothing but land, might be interested in putting a tower on their property, because when you put a tower somewhere, you collect revenue from the carrier, so, yeah, lots of information, Ralph said he was willing to help us in any way we needed, he would come to meetings, he would help, but Carol made, to her point, I think, made a great point, I think, probably need a separate committee to work on this, if we really, because this is too big for this group.
Yep.
And we don't have the bandwidth at the time, but like I had said, you know, maybe we could get a group of parents, we need to work with the police, because can we get that radio tower at the Select Board? Ralph, I'm happy to help out and kind of liaison, since I've spoken with Ralph, and we have the information from Paul, and, you know, and kind of get the committee up and going, but he pretty much said it's gonna be, his words were, it's going to be an uphill battle. This isn't gonna be something that we're gonna have this year, we gotta, and it's gonna be approved by town meeting, and we would need permits from the town, sorry, I wrote all my notes, he called me, and I was writing them on the back of my bills.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So who is Ralph, what is his connection?
So Ralph Fiscami was on the planning board, and back in Boylston.
Yep.
No longer, he's no longer, but, oh yeah, that's the other thing, he said, you need to really involve the planning board with this.
You're right.
But not right now, it would be after we deal with Motorola.
So Ralph was on the planning board the first time?
In Boylston, when Boylston, when they were trying to do this, when Verizon, Verizon approached the town, so Paul was right, Verizon came, it was 2006, so Paul's been here a while, huh?
Okay, wow, okay.
I didn't realize that. So yeah, Verizon approached the town, and the Diamond Hill, the residents voted it down, because the location was gonna be...
Yeah.
So Tohonto, in 2006, that Tohonto, I guess it was there, but it was the old Tohonto.
The old Tohonto.
Yep.
But to what Megan was saying, too, I think, it seems like, from what the town is doing already in their involvement with the police tower, we don't know what is going to happen with that, if it's a matter of somewhere, discussion around being, that going forward, if they move the tower elsewhere, so we don't know, I mean, we don't know what's gonna happen, I just feel like we're a piece of this.
Right.
And maybe down the road, we have, the town organizes, or parents, or somebody organizes a special interest group of which we could join as a...
I get it.
Some representatives, or a representative that represents the schools in that part of it, I don't see a spearheading this, we can't, we, we just, I don't think we have the capacity to do it, and I think it's bigger than us, this is a town concern, and that's why I think, and it's a police concern, so...
Right, so what's currently happening with the existing tower that's going in?
I don't want to use the word litigation, but no, the current police tower is halted due to legal papers, injunction, I don't know the legal terms.
Okay, so it's not going to town floor for a vote or anything?
So it already went to town floor and was voted, but apparently, they did not take, and I, again, I'm just, I was not involved in this in any way, I missed that town meeting, my kids were sick, I know Jessica went, she filled me in on some details, I don't live over there, so I don't know the details, I can try to get a few more details, but my understanding of the situation is, last town meeting last May, the town voted for this police, new, this new radio system, for the Boylston police, with that, they need a radio tower.
Yeah.
Supposedly, without letting the residents know, the town picked the location of, it's a municipal piece of land, but it's on Stiles Road, do you know Stiles Road?
No.
It's a very residential area, there's a tiny plot of land, and you can look it up, Julie, it's like, very small plot of land, it has a water tower on it, and they want to put the radio tower right next to the water tower, well, apparently, according to Ralph and other residents, this tower would be like 100 feet from people's residences, so, it, it's, there's lots of risks, it's, it's like, the water tower is like in these people's yards, and the cell tower, the radio tower would be like right there.
I imagine at some point during town meeting, that was discussed, that it got voted that the town...
Supposedly, it was not, supposedly the Select Board talked about it, it was never brought to the planning board, that is confirmed, Ralph said, you know, he doesn't understand why that happened, but pretty much Motorola said, this is the location it needs to be, and the police went with it, and because it's a piece of municipal land, and they felt that they had the right to move forward, and neighbors were not notified until this other town meeting, somebody found out, because the equipment got delivered to the site of the water tower, one of the neighbors saw the equipment and said to the people delivering, what is this, and he said, we're building a tower, and they're like, what? And so that neighbor went out, and that person went out of his way and got information, and then he went door to door to the whole neighborhood, and got all those neighborhoods to go to the town meeting, and my understanding is, the vote wasn't even to put the tower, whether or not to put the tower, it was something else, and it passed, it was related to that, but when people didn't know, they didn't know until the equipment was getting delivered, so the neighbors are upset, so legal papers have been filed, the town has halted, and the, I don't believe the Select Board can comment further. So that's where we stand with that, so, to Carol's point, I don't know if you, if you know people that want to, I'm happy to, I can't commit a ton of time to this, but I've already spoken with Ralph, I'm happy to liaise and get things going, and Ralph wants to help, obviously, but yeah, I, the school department can't.
I do think, I mean, I, I have a number, you probably got a number of emails from parents concerned about Friday's, the lack of ability to communicate, and Nancy's experience, right, Lauren has gone through, we, over in the Tohonto area, so there were parents that expressed that to me, and I, I said I appreciate it, and I appreciate any advocacy you could do, they may be, because they spoke, spoke about, out about it, you know, I mean, and trying to figure out what to do, they may be among those who'd be interested in problem solving this, so I can always share their names if we want to reach out to them.
I was wondering if we could, as a district, then write to the Select Board?
Which, which one?
Boylston Select Board, because Berlin wouldn't be, it's because it's Boylston's land, and maybe not now, because there's, you're going before them with the budget, but sometime in the near future, and saying, you know, in lieu of what recently happened, and having no service is, is a, is a safety issue, and how can we, together, rectify this?
And I think, I think that Chief Anziata was speaking to that at the Select Board meeting this recent one, he had, he had his monthly, he does a monthly update with them, and so they're, and they're very aware of that, that there's, there's definitely an issue there, so I think it's just a matter, like, we have, is it up?
Yeah, it's there, but not up.
Yeah, oh yeah, it's all that...
I can't even see, and Ralph said so, a thou, it's like a thousand or 1,200 feet, it's safe, that's, oh, it's really gonna be like right here?
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't realize it was gonna be this close to the building.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think he said like a thousand, or, there's this, I mean, again, I, I gotta look, research some of this, but I thought he said, like, so, I don't know how big Tohonto's property is, it might be simple, like, oh yeah, Tohonto has, I don't know, 20,000 square foot, I don't know how big the property is.
It's not very.
It's not, yeah, so I don't know.
A lot of it's a watershed area, that DCR land.
DCR, right, so if that's DCR land, I don't know, you know, again, that's another whole other, then you gotta deal with the state, that's not, but, you know, maybe, to your point, if we, I wouldn't do it in a, you know, maybe have like a conversation with the Select Board and say, hey, like, could we approach Tower Hill, like, maybe this would be something they'd be interested in, would this, you know, ask the police for, like, would this help you, would, could, would this solve, I don't know, just putting it out there?
Yep.
For somebody else to kind of, but I do think we need a, a committee, the other thing is, I, I think it needs to have, we need to do something, we can't, this committee can't say, well, we're gonna just wait and see what happens, I think we need to do something, but I don't...
I think it's gotta be more town driven, with...
I'm with you, Nancy, it has to be more town driven.
Town driven, yeah, that's what I, of which we can represent.
So we need to put our needs to the town.
Approach the Select Board and put a request in for a committee to be formed.
Yeah, we can do that.
Right, and that's what we'll need to do, yeah, I just want to make sure we're doing our part, so that if parents come back, or God forbid, something does happen, and they're like, well, you guys didn't do anything, well, yes, we did, we brought this to the town, and if the town can't move forward with it, then the schools have done everything they can.
Right.
So I, I think we do need to have a conversation with...
Maybe the town administrator, and maybe she could take it forward.
And I had reached out to her, and the response I got was kind of, I don't know, Carol, you saw the email, it was kind of like, talk to Ralph, it sounded like they didn't want to become...
Is Ralph still on the planning board?
No, he's retired, he's just, again, doing this like us, he's just the volunteers, like, just wants to help, he's like, a really great guy, seemed like, he was like, oh, whatever you need, I'm happy to help, I want to be a part of this, call me anytime, he was a wealth of information, he's done a ton of research on this.
Yeah.
So...
I don't even know how to go about doing, so I think you've just gotta go...
So, Carol, why don't we talk, why don't we talk kind of back envelope with Matt on Monday, and I can talk to Seth, I think that's how you kind of get these conversations going, and then...
Somebody may have something planned already.
Maybe he can give you direction.
Maybe they do, or if they can even comment on it, but I think...
Not even with the walkie, I, I don't know anything about this stuff, this isn't my thing, you know, right, I don't know, yeah.
Feelings are, I think emotions are high with that whole thing.
Mm-hmm, I'm sure, yeah.
So, anyway, so that's the situation.
But to your point, if it's a matter of placement, of placing this elsewhere in the town?
Yeah.
There may be other options, and that's what we choose to do, but it's also, it's gotta be an effective cell phone tower, but if it's over, I mean, we do need something.
We, we need something, absolutely.
And the worst comes to worst, Paul, so Paul said, remember, he said, we can put, what is it called, a splitter, what is it called, Adam wanted to do it.
It begins with R.
Repeater?
A repeater.
Repeater, yeah, good job! Yeah, you got it!
Repeaters, but it was gonna cost, like, we would lose like 20,000 a year, what is it, 25,000 a year, were you here for that meeting, it was like 25,000 a year we would lose?
Yeah.
Because we get a discount from the state for being in compliance, for not allowing cell service in the schools, okay.
I'd want to know more about that.
So that's the other thing that we could do as a school department, that might be easier than getting involved in this whole, like, where do we get a cell tower?
I think...
Unless you want to put a cell tower on Tohonto property, but that's, like, that's kind of, you're...
Right.
I wouldn't want it for my kids, but...
I say let's look into the repeater, get more information.
I...
Ask Paul if he could get...
Yeah, Paul might be a great person to work on this group, too, because that's Yeah, Paul might be a great person to work on this group too, because that's kind of like his wheelhouse. I don't know what his workload is or how busy he is, but maybe.
I don't know anything about this losing twenty five thousand, I don't know, there, I might be.
Okay, I thought that's what he said, but I came wrong.
So when I, this first got brought.
It doesn't mean that that's not what he said, I just.
Yeah, oh, you're, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, this was first brought to my attention by a parent who wore kids in the district. Um, he said, the repeaters.
That's what most parents want.
I wrote down, you know.
He didn't mention cell tower at all.
Repeaters, yes.
No, the cell tower was Paul's, yeah.
Right.
Repeater, no, oh, we wanna get E-rate.
That's what it was, so what is that?
Well, you know what's really funny, as I'm sitting here, my email's in front of me, and I just got an email from our E-rate representative to have a meeting.
Oh.
So why don't I bring it up? It's me, Paul and her, and why don't I, I'll bring it up at our meeting.
This was, she offered to meet with, right?
Yeah, we're meeting with her anyways, just for the whole E-rate process, E-rate. And he also said, it could be a liability, but I have no idea anymore, but, but those are the two things that I wrote down when we were discussing it.
Meeting again, I think I put in.
Uh, with her.
Yeah.
It just says we need to set up a, a meeting to this, so would you like to be part of it?
Yes, because I think originally I couldn't.
Okay, great, that sounds great.
Okay, so why don't we do that next? We'll meet with the E-rate person, let us get more information on that and how it would affect financially negatively if we did a repeater.
Um, and maybe Paul could reach out to other IT directors and kinda get, he mentioned the liability, why is it a liability issue? And see if other schools do it, maybe he could reach out at rate, what do you think of that?
I think that's great.
Okay.
I mean, Tohonto is kind of in the middle of nowhere. So Ralph did say that was one thing too. That area historically has been like a dead zone over there, you know, cause it's out by the reservoir. So you're kind of in the, like, you're, it is kind of in the middle of nowhere, it's just, there's no, so understandable.
It's understandable, but it's very difficult with a, with a, when a safety issue. I was outside and it was very difficult.
Were you outside Tohonto?
I was outside of Tohonto, I couldn't communicate with inside. You know, parents were in the line, it's very, it's very, it's very hard.
Running, getting messages.
Right, and they didn't know what was going on, right, and I didn't know what was going, like, I was doing.
That's bad.
Stop, but I didn't know what was happening with the inside, you know.
So the repeater, we might have to suck up the money.
Let's look into the repeater.
And yeah, it's twenty five thousand a year.
Yep, okay, sounds like a good next step.
Yep, next step, awesome.
In a faster solution, I'm thinking.
Agreed, yep.
Right, and we might need that, yeah. And like, then if things work out with the tower and in two years down the road, they've figured it out and then we get rid of the repeater.
Yep.
And the E-rate or whatever that stuff is.
Yep.
Okay, new business, unless anyone had anything else? All right, good. Okay. Cafeteria personnel pay re, benchmark.
So I invited Lauren to come, she's director of food services. And so our ladies in the cafeteria, they, you know, since COVID. What did we say, Lauren, twenty percent? Yeah, the lunches, you know, now it's free and reduced lunches. The volume has increased by approximately twenty, twenty percent since pre-COVID.
Wow.
We're working under the same amount of employees, if not less, due to the worker shortage. They have been working extremely hard. And even over COVID, they did the, the box lunches, they came in, you know, they went above and beyond. And we're shorthanded extremely, it's very hard to keep personnel, it's all around. So a couple of things we kinda wanted to bounce off of you. One is I did a benchmarking and I compared it, I only heard back from three school systems. But I went to the neighboring school systems of Nishoba, Marlboro and Northborough, Southborough. Um, I took the average, including ours. So if you look at the spreadsheet that I gave, and then you'll see the average, so that's the average of our school, Nishoba, Marlboro and Northborough, Southborough. And then I compared the difference to what we are paying, and you can see the difference. And we're short on them all. So it's broken out into three categories, you got your manager or your lead cook. And that's your first category. Your second category is your assistant cook slash cooks, and then you have your helpers. So obviously, the, it goes in order, right? Your managers are definitely being paid a lot less, ranging from three dollars and forty eight cents to four dollars and forty two cents less. Your cooks are a dollar sixty nine to three oh six less, and your helpers are sixty three cents to a dollar twenty seven less.
Yep.
So Lauren and I were kinda, you know, bouncing it off and trying to think of different ideas. One thing we wanna be, um, cognizant of is next year, they could take this back. With, right now it's free and reduced lunch, so our volume could decrease.
Universally free lunch.
Right, right.
So that's driving up participation, and that could kind of stop at any point, but.
Are you hearing anything about that?
That it will go that way, but there's nothing certain.
I heard they were gonna keep free lunch forever.
So a few states have, California did, Maine did as well, but Massachusetts hasn't released class anything yet, so.
So I like to keep that in mind because if that happens, your, the revenue will decrease.
Yeah.
And, you know, we're paying out more, right? That's one thing to keep in mind. Two, we might not, we probably would adjust the staff, right?
Yeah, hours, they wouldn't need to produce as many meals, so it's all relative.
Doesn't mean we would lay them off, but they would work less hours, right, right? So just some things to keep in mind. But then also that, uh, your inventory's less, your food supplies are less.
Yeah.
So hopefully it would end up washing out, but, you know, we're just not a fortune teller, so it's just something we wanted to bring to your attention.
So if the state, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, so the steps are essentially years?
Of experience.
Yes, one through ten.
Okay, so after ten years, it's twenty dollars an hour?
Yes, yep.
Yeah.
Now, keep in mind, minimum wage has just moved to fifteen dollars an hour, too.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Yeah, so if you look at our personnel, wait, do you have that sheet, the other one? So it ranges from fifteen oh one to, our highest is twenty two. So we do have like a, an employee right at fifteen.
Fifteen?
Fifteen oh one to twenty.
She's sub, not that I see.
So she started a year ago. And then, yeah, without experience, so it's, it's not making the, the job very attractive.
Hey, go work at Target and you know how.
Right, right. It's not, it's been hard to sustain.
It would be like, the only people that would do it would be like parents.
Okay, so I just realized, on this.
Few hours a day too.
Bottom column, four step, I grabbed the wrong, I apologize, th- these are incorrect.
Shoot.
That's okay.
I'm sorry. So it should start at fifteen oh one, and it starts at level five, yes, on helper. So level five is fifteen oh one, and then six is fifteen twenty four.
So it goes up by twenty three cents each time?
Yeah.
So why are the steps so, um, the increase in steps so small? Is that something we set?
Yeah.
That same with Paris, same, twenty cents an hour? So that's like a dollar a day?
Yeah. So this difference for the helpers is gonna be more than what I have, I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay, not that much. So, so, so.
So we thought of two things, I'm sorry.
No, no, yeah, tell me the thoughts and then.
We could, we could do nothing. We could give a small incremental increase.
Yeah.
We could do a bonus, a little bonus, to let them know they're appreciated. You know, it's obviously up to the school committee.
Could you do both a bonus and the increase?
That's the way.
Yep, so another thing to look at, the other sheet.
Yeah.
I'm forecasting out where we will be at the end of the year. But, and so there's one other, so if you look at the sheet, it shows that this is without an increase, as ending the year at fifty eight dollars.
Without an increase.
Right, but this is why. So the thing to remember in your lunch revolving, you're not in this to make a profit, you're in this to just break even, right?
Right, okay.
One thing this school does is they take their health insurance out of the revolving account. I've never seen that done, I've always seen that done, you know, the, on the town, school side, not in the revolving side. So if we were to switch that, right now the health insurance is eighteen thousand dollars. So that would go back to the budget, general budget, and then that would free up us to expand, to help these employees more. And at this point in time, I would be able to do that, cause it wouldn't be eighteen at this point in time. If we say we switched it, it, it would be half that, it would be nine.
So you could make that, that could happen now?
Make that happen right now, yeah, yeah, and then that would free up money, yeah. Well, about nine for this year.
Oh, okay.
It's eighteen total.
Yeah, okay.
How many total employees do you have in food service?
Did I take it?
Thirteen.
The whole district?
Twelve, and then I think we have a position.
And then hers thirteen. Okay, so the other thing I wanted to mention, so here I just gave just a rough.
Yeah.
The fifty cents, fifty cents, twenty five cents, that's approximately eight thousand dollars for a full year.
Yeah.
That's what that would be.
For everybody.
For everybody, if we did that recommendation.
Fifty cents, is that, so tell me this, is that, are people gonna receive that? Like, I remember when I was, like, twenty years ago, I was like, yes, I got a fifty cent an hour raise, twenty years ago. Is that gonna be received well, or is that gonna be received as, thanks for nothing?
I know.
I think it's better, I think it's better than nothing, but also, I mean, it depends if we combined it with a bonus.
I would do that.
The bonus is almost like retroactive, like, we didn't give you this raise during COVID. And then we're working towards, um, increasing.
Yeah, I think we definitely need.
I think that's great that this was brought up, because wow, it's dismally low, explain something. And that all during COVID, you, I mean, I've worked in restaurants on food service lines, it is hard work.
It's very hard.
And then you add the element of hungry children in front of you.
That are, well, they get free lunch.
Exactly, it is very, very difficult.
Yes.
Um, so yeah, I, I support the raise and the, um, bonus.
Are you looking to, for the bonus to be across the board the same amount, or is it based on the step that they're on? Will it vary, or have you not thought about that yet? I just didn't know what, like, can you, do you have enough in your pot, the pot to make this happen right now?
I think we would have to do it the same across the board. Well, do you feel that they all contributed the same over COVID?
I mean, they, they work different hours.
We can base it on hours work?
I think that probably makes more sense.
Would it be easy to look back to see during that period of time? So maybe we should base it off of the hours work?
Because it's hard to say response, you do, you have the responsibilities, but everybody's working hard at whatever their responsibility is, you know.
What's the bonus you're thinking about, like, five hundred dollars or?
I mean.
What do you have, Nancy, what do we have left?
Well, I would say about, I have eight to work with, eight thousand. So this increase, if we went with this increase.
That's the full eight thousand?
No, that's it for, eight thousand's for a year, so you got about fifty five hundred, I would be using, you have about three thousand left.
Three thousand to give bonuses for thirteen people, so that's not even five hundred dollars.
What is that?
Unless we went, we went into school choice.
Two hundred, a couple hundred bucks each, a couple hundred bucks each, depending on your hour. So you probably get between like one hundred and three hundred bucks. So yeah.
Yeah, one hundred?
Yeah, three thousand, thirteen people, I didn't.
I'm gonna do it, you did it in your head, you little.
Three thousand.
Look at her, smarty pants, divided by thirteen.
Taxes returns.
Two thirty.
That's if you did, yeah, two thirty, yeah.
So what have to find?
So like, somebody that will always work in like five hours a week, they're not gonna get two, the full two thirty, they get like a hundred bucks. And then somebody that's working more might get the three hundred. You have to do something, so we don't have any more money that we can find?
That's what I'm trying to think.
Oh my god, can we get someone to have a donation?
We have money in school choice.
We have money in school choice, we can, you know.
How much would you be pulling?
What if we just bring them up to, why are we paying so much lower? My bigger question is, why are we paying, I get Marlboro, it's a big city, but like Nishoba, Northborough, Southborough, like.
Nishoba's pretty big.
We should be more like on par with, um, I get Marlboro's a kinda like an inner city, but like Nishoba, Northborough, Southborough. I'd say that's kind of like on par with our district, uh, you know, I.
Right, so if someone's looking for a job.
Yeah, why am I not gonna go to Northborough, Southborough? It's literally, Algonquin is what, fifteen minutes away from here, twenty minutes away from Tohonto? So why am I knocking up for two dollars an hour more?
And I do think that. Yeah.
So I, I'd like to see us be able to, um, you know, I think Adam was trying to spearhead this to your point, Julie, with the Paris and. And we gotta just drop the.
Talk about Paris at another meeting, but I.
Stay focused.
But my opinion, Paris are pretty equitable.
Yeah, we looked at that.
You're right, we, that's why we dropped that, you're right, cause they were, we said that.
They are right in line.
So then I think we need to, I mean, can we up, do we have the wiggle room to up at like two bucks an hour?
Thank you, you know how I made that error in the last column?
She just fixed that?
I did.
Oh my gosh, on it. Yeah, do we have the wiggle room to move that?
Yeah, I mean, look at, if we.
I'm nervous, I'm not gonna, we're just breaking even, we're just breaking even. It would take, so the way other school districts do it, all the repairs would have to be moved into the general budget.
Okay.
You know, this year we fixed for Boylston, the floor.
Yeah, we sealed the freezer floor, I think we're doing the Tohonto floor this summer.
Yep, but that, that was like forty five hundred, just to be compliant with the Board of Health.
Sure, it's like they're not like, things we can.
So stuff like that really can eat your budget, so.
That stuff's not in the general budget, is that what you just said?
Not now, not now.
It's unrevolving.
Correct, so that's why you can only go.
This is what happens when you have these older buildings, none of our buildings are brand new, really. We talked about this on the tours, we're gonna have, this is gonna be coming up every year.
Redo the floor in Boylston.
Stuff like this.
That, that is in the capital plan for next year, so redo the whole floor, if Boylston approves it.
Yeah, I mean, I said it's in.
Personally, at this point in time, I wouldn't be comfortable going above this, because I'm just.
I'd absolutely approve it.
The fifty cents in the.
Oh, the recommended.
Yeah, I, I.
Okay, so you know.
I'm not saying they don't deserve it, I'm nervous of going in the red.
So can we, can we consider this for this year and then?
And then reevaluate, yeah.
Yeah, can we build this into next year's budget? So, yeah, I guess, so you're saying recommended immediately fifty dollar or fifty cent an hour raise for everybody? And then can we look at?
I do have the, I mean, we can change it.
Sorry, twenty five for the helpers.
But now, keep in mind, I did the helpers less because of my old calculation, now it increased, so maybe we should go to fifty cents.
Yeah, probably. Down here.
Oh, right.
Cause, yeah, we gotta switch it, so.
I'd mix the bonus, what do you, a hundred dollar, two hundred dollars, then you take taxes out of, that's nothing, it's.
Did you say mix the bonus?
Well, cause if she ups this to fifty, she's eating away at all our money, right?
Can't, do you have?
I can, the helpers, I can change it to fifty.
And then what do you have left for a bonus? You don't have twenty three hundred, you don't have two thousand dollars left then.
It was three.
Would you guys want?
It was three thousand.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's not that much, and I could get you a definite amount and, and send it off to you before our next school committee meeting.
I would say definitely, it's well, it's well, it's well deserved for these, these employees.
And then it, when it hits this account, so, right?
Yep, yep, yeah, do, do that, and then let's see what we can, um, do for the budget next year to kinda get these people up to at least average.
I know, doing quick math on my calculator.
I mean, no wonder why we haven't had anyone in there all year, at fifteen dollars an hour. So why is a step one sixteen and a step five is fifteen?
I didn't delete that, ignored sixteen oh five.
So they basically blanked out the first.
Right.
Oh, so you start, everyone's. They were below.
Right, so it starts at minimum wage, so really, step five is one, yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
So step five is, yeah, so you start at fifteen dollars an hour, so most people, cause you're not, if you've been doing, so most people are making fifteen bucks an hour, they're making minimum wage doing this.
Yeah.
You could literally be a teenager.
Yep, you got, my son's making that a market basket.
Right, right.
Um, what was I going to say? How many staff do you have that were here through COVID and then till now?
Um, so yeah, we, we've had surprising retention, so, let's see, one, two. Seven, eight, eight people since I started in twenty twenty, so.
So that would be the other question.
Uh huh, so five new staff.
Would the new get the bonus or just the eight?
Well, I'm saying like, yeah, I think the COVID people should get paid. Yeah.
The new person.
Yeah.
For the bonus, yeah, you figure out your bonus structure, you guys as the manager or whatever, you figure out the bonus, whatever, but.
But I wouldn't even give them, you know.
The COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if we could get like a donation? Like a ten, what do you mean, ten thousand? What would ten thousand do?
Say we get, there's thirteen, is that what we just said, Lauren?
Yeah, thirteen, if you want five, that's six.
Not including me, that's a twelve.
And then you said you have one position open.
So thirteen times five, twelve.
Twelve current employees.
Six thousand five hundred.
One year, one more.
Sixty five hundred dollars, can you, can't find that somewhere?
If we gave five hundred to the COVID people, a little less to the non-COVID.
Five hundred, it's four thousand.
So.
If that's what you chose.
Just call like a hiring bonus or something.
I apologize, how many are not, how many pre-COVID and how many?
Um, well, when do we wanna consider COVID? Because, from when I started, I guess, cause I started in twenty twenty.
Yes.
So.
People that started before this school year.
Before this school year.
Last year was bad.
Yes, it was.
We were still masked in the cafeteria, it was hot. That cafeteria is hot too, at BEES, man, it is.
Alright, so we have nine.
Now we're at four thousand five hundred.
Yep.
And you split that amongst three different school choices?
Can you take that from school choice? Yeah.
Of course.
School committee approves it. Yeah.
Yep, we'll do that.
So this would start February, after, if we put it on the agenda for the February meeting.
February 7th.
It'd be.
And the raise, do we need school committee approval to give, you need that for a raise, too?
Mm-hmm.
50 cent an hour?
Yep, because they, you approve.
We should have a threshold that if it's under a $10,000 expenditure, it doesn't have to wait for a meeting. Can we, I wonder if we can do that? If we can just approve it at this committee. Under $10,000? I think that's, you think that's dangerous?
I don't. I don't know the criteria of how this committee was approved, so I don't know. I don't.
Yeah.
I think if they gave you permission to do that, but I don't know if they did.
Right, I don't know that's right now.
That's how it was.
Oh, no, I'm not saying let's do it now. I'm saying moving forward, let's see if we can do that. Because like something like this, then you could have just like, we could have talked about it today.
Okay, I understand.
We could have voted and we could have moved forward. So that's what we need, like, and $10,000, like, that's not gonna make or break anything, it's just gonna help.
Yeah.
With little problems. So, I mean, it's like how we have like.
No.
I don't think so either.
I don't think you can.
I think you're right, because we have to vote on those 100 and something dollars, yeah. Exactly, the whole committee, no, yeah, we're just two of us, we're not in a quorum.
Even have to, oh, I was gonna say, you might even have to just vote to bring this forward as a recommendation.
It'll have to, it's gonna have to be a vote, it'll have to get on the agenda.
Yeah.
Yep.
Alright.
So next school committee meeting will approve.
It's not that far away.
No, it's on February 7th.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we can make it effective for the next table.
And then you can do the bonus for the next pay period, yeah, Valentine's Day bonus, whatever.
So we'll, Lauren and I will sit and we'll go over it, just so you have the breakout in the total and, um, so.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Alright, and then, um.
Good.
When I do my overview, I'll say that we discussed it at length at our meeting and it's something that Julie and I both are in favor of.
Great, thank you so much.
Just so we can push it, oh my God.
Yeah, you don't know until you see the figures.
Right.
In your awesome charts laid out, um, right?
What's also great with the subcommittees, you get a, get a chance to have these kind of discussions, because otherwise all of this, this is the part, why this, these committees were formed. Because it would be all going on during the regular school committee meeting.
Yes.
I mean, it might anyway, but I think if you have everything.
Yes.
You're in favor.
And total, what's it gonna cost? It's, it's under $10,000.
Right.
So that's all Mike and Bob need to know, so we don't have 50 questions of, well, what are you gonna do here?
Right.
You know what I mean? Because we don't want to spend 30 minutes picking.
No, I'll have it clearly broken out.
That's fine. And I'm just gonna make sure when I go through my thing, I'm gonna say Nancy's gonna discuss in a little bit more detail, but this committee discussed it. And we are 100% behind it and.
Awesome.
Yeah, so.
It's great.
We would advise. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's hard work in that kitchen.
It is.
It is. They deserve it.
Yeah, they deserve it, yep.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, and just working in a school in general is hard, like being around kids, especially in today's day and age where everybody is like germophobic. Um, and nobody, and that, again, that's why we have a shortage of drivers and paras and teachers. People don't want to be in that environment, they're scared of germs.
Mm-hmm.
Yep, so yeah, it is. Awesome. Alright, great, last item, uh, the safety update. And, uh, so I think.
Stay unless you want to.
Yeah, I don't.
I might sneak out.
Go ahead, yeah, sorry.
Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you so much.
So sorry.
Alright, take care, Lauren. So the last thing, and I don't want a, a long update, but, um, I just feel like, because this is a safety committee, and, um, I don't know how much detail Mike's gonna go into. Maybe just like, if you want to debrief us on what, um, how your meeting went with, uh, um, the crisis, whatever that group is called that you guys meet, met with on Tuesday.
Yeah, let me see if I have my notes with me on that. I can speak to that anyway.
Yeah, just not, it doesn't have to be in detail, just how everything went and whatever, the, the takeaways from the situation, honestly, I mean.
Let me just speak to that.
Yeah, I thought everything was.
I thought you guys were amazing.
Yeah, and most, I think that was the consensus from whatever, for most people, the own.
Same.
Yeah, so I.
Yeah, so we met in, in the full crisis, crisis team meeting, um, right away on Monday. And each person had a chance to tell their story. And it was a great exercise because that, that's how, that's the protocol for doing it, what happened in.
Yeah.
In, in your involvement in this whole process. So we had all the principals there, we had the, um, police and fire department, well, we had the Boylston Fire Department. And the two police departments, um, the chiefs, and then Goody was there as a resource and Rob Barbado. So, and, so, I think it really, we started to see patterns unfolding by listening to everybody's story. Glitches, which is what we were talking about before with the communication over Tohoto.
Mm-hmm.
Um, questions that came up about things like how to pick up lines and what do you do in those types of scenarios? And, and then there was a discussion around the distinction between the, um, hold in place, shelter in place, and then a lockdown. Because words were being interchanged, so I think that was lending confusion. But I also think for some, just being able to define what that means. So initially, the report to us was a whole, more of a hold in place. We did, even before announcements went out, but it quickly turned into a shelter in place. That was the directive I got from the police department, and that went out to everybody. The challenge of this experience was that Tohoto was in dismissal.
Right.
Because it's never a perfect time to have an emergency, right? So, or, not, this was an emergency for us, but, but something like this, some kind of event like this. And I think that that, that was the challenge for us of the whole piece of it. Students had already been dismissed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and what we were trying to do first with hold in places, make sure those buses didn't leave the campus over in Tohoto, because they would have gone back to Boylston or wherever.
Right.
We had games coming in.
Yep.
That we had to cancel immediately. We had students going out. There was a field trip happening.
They canceled the games.
And, and when folks were calling it, so multiple people were calling, we had the game.
Right.
Oh, it was just like, everything was getting thrown at you. It wasn't, but it was fascinating, like, um, and then we had it going out to play sports at elsewhere, so could they go out? Um, and then we also had a field trip coming in who was coming back and was late. That was saving grace for us because that enabled, the buses were being held anyway for that purpose of those students returning. And that bought some time to be able to have kept those buses there. Had that not have happened before we were even involved in all of this, those buses would have been gone. And, and we would have had to try to radio them somehow.
So you got, they had loaded the dismissal buses. They told the kids.
I knew that.
We're gonna get dismissed, but we're waiting on a field trip bus to get back. Right when they get back, we'll leave. And that's what happened.
Yeah, that's just tough for the kids.
It was confusing. It was around, you know, again, a lot of it was around trying to communicate over there. I think that Berlin was so far removed.
Yeah.
There was confusion for them about why they were doing that, but they had to also remember that we didn't. When everybody was putting shelter in place, they didn't have that info, we didn't have that information to know who this was.
Right.
What was going on. What this, did this person have transportation? What was the intent of the individual? That information hadn't come to us yet. So, but that happened pretty, pretty quickly. I think that Berlin was lifted. It was just getting to everybody. Um, one of the things we realized up here, I think we naturally did it, was delegating responsibility.
Yep.
One of the things we have to think about is, if I'm not here, who does this go to? Because I wasn't in, I wasn't here, not that it mattered, but the information coming to me, I was coming back. Um, so, in that time period, you know, we have to have, luckily I called Nancy and then things started happening with the buses and so on. So just, just down the road, I think being more, um, formal about that process, also over Tohoto. Who's, what, Sally was over in interviews.
She was at BEES.
In BEES. Janelle was over there. So Carol was there.
Weird.
And so many things were going, you know, so who's.
Wow.
So we, we met with them yesterday. We met with the Tohoto office staff and Sally and Kara and brainstormed. And they're having subsequent meetings today at their crisis meet, team over there about pulling that core team together, so if something like this happens, you know who to pull.
Yeah.
Right away. Those people come forward. They're not classroom teachers mostly, like counselors and the athletic director and phys ed teacher. Whoever it is that can, can come and work immediately and give them a specific job, so they have it ahead of time.
Yeah.
They know what to do. So.
Great.
So all of those things, the police were, were very complimentary, but they also felt that this, you know, was a. They see this as a training exercise, which I.
Right.
I guess I have a hard time, in, in their world.
Right.
Because nothing happened.
In their world.
It is a training exercise, and it is from that level, but it's all, you know, it was very real for us, so, so it's a learning opportunity for us. But I think those are the, those, right, were the, the big ticket things.
Yeah.
The police, they have their own thing about talking with one another and how that works that we don't get involved in, and that's their work. So they were debriefing with one another, I think also, too, which is really important, but.
Yeah, that's great.
You look back on it all, and there's, there are woulda, coulda, shouldas, and maybe we could do this better, and people question, I get that, because it is confusing. But in the, understanding that in that moment, in time, we did what we needed to do. And bottom line is keeping all the children safe and the staff in the building, so.
I haven't heard anybody say anything negative about how the district handled it.
Wonderful. Yeah, here and there, but, you know, I just, but not mostly, mostly.
Yeah.
Mostly positive comments. Um, so I never, I, I have never doubted for a minute that, that we didn't do the right thing by sheltering in place. And lifting from there, right?
Yeah, I agree.
Yep.
Even if we over, now it looks like, oh, maybe, but I don't feel that way.
No, not in Boylston, uh-uh. I was way too close to that school.
Yeah, absolutely.
And you know, you talk about like relationships, right? When we were talking about that school committee of how the elementary teachers are building relationships with the high school teachers, right? And it was so true with this situation, when I went to Berlin to pick up my daughter, you know, the cars are lined up like way on the South Street. And there you see Officer Goody and Chief Shartner, they're out there, and, and Goody took all the people out of their cars, addressed one large group, explained to everyone, save, dah dah dah. And then went individually to every single, because he knows everybody. But every single car.
That is.
That's so great.
Just to say, everything's okay, you know, that, you know, he wasn't giving any information, but just saying to people, we're good.
Having him to say that to them made a world of difference.
Yep.
That speaks to the relationship, too, between us. And we were on the phone and they, because we don't have to spend time having this. Get to know you conversation in the midst of something going on. We call each other all the time.
Yeah.
I see them all the time.
Yep.
And we're, the other group is right here, I mean.
Right.
There are days where I'm like, you probably don't want to see me today, since you've been with me most of the day, but, but that's happened over the years.
Yeah.
It's not just like yesterday kind of a thing, so.
But it is, it's our relationship.
Building a great relationship with the, with the highway departments, thank you guys, Fred and.
Right, right, right.
I start the next, the night before saying, I'll be calling you.
Oh, and they're probably like.
They're awesome, but they're funny and they're, and they're, but that's just a relationship building.
Yep, and it's important.
Things.
It is important.
For all of us. Principals, all of you, all the school committee.
Everything.
So, and then I think that speaks to why we want to do the things the right way and the kinds of things we're interested in doing with getting the, um.
Right.
Particularly the communication, which is essential, and we need to, we need to address this. It's just very unsettling. That's the biggest part, right?
Yes.
It's unsettling for us.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, the cell phone stuff, yeah.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Yep.
Our cell phone, our radios.
The radios, yes.
Yep.
Oh, so the radios weren't working at Tohoto either?
They, some of them were.
Because they worked at BEES, they were.
Right, but I think it's the police radios and the wavelength.
It'd be nice if we could tie in.
Talking to one another, the three, the two.
Oh.
The two towns.
People must have.
What's happening?
You know how I was kind of telling, like, people were listening to the police radios.
It's a scanner.
The scanners, yes.
If we had a walkie, like the, what they're trying to do, we could connect with them. So when something like this happens, you can.
Yes, because that's what they had at BEES. They had the walkie talkies and they were talking throughout the building, like they have their protocol.
It'd be nice to have that with the police.
Right. Right, the communication.
It would be nice to be able to use that outside.
Yeah, I know.
Right.
I know, I go into that building and I'm always like, oh, I need to hack the wifi.
I know, I know.
You know, because.
Like example, I, when I went to Tohoto, I was going to the cars, because at that time we were releasing Berlin, but not Boylston. And the cars were kind of all.
Yeah, jammed.
Jammed. They couldn't get through, right? So I had Berlin leave if they had their child and Boylston looped back around.
Yeah.
But at one point, I heard over the intercom, Boylston bus three can get on the bus, and I'm like, I guess it's over. You know what I mean? Because you just don't have the communication, so I was.
Where if you had a walkie on you, you'd know that.
It'd be like, okay, you know, you would know, that's all, so.
Right, and because Carol's calls weren't coming.
I didn't get Carol's calls until later, right.
It was funny, because people kept.
The boss was saying, and our team was trying to call me. I didn't get their calls till later. Yeah.
Because you were tapped into help.
Right, 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 yeah, so.
I think that was because there's so many people on there, right there on their phones. It would have been nice to have somebody outside of BEES talking to people.
Yeah, they didn't have anyone.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's, that's the only thing, is there was no one, so let's say there was an active shooter, and again, I know the police were all over it.
But that would be a different situ, think of it, this is how.
It would have been a different situation.
They would have been at.
They would have been at the school.
Right.
Yeah, because they knew you guys were saying.
It was just a, a stay in place. The school wasn't a threat.
The school wasn't a threat.
So that's, if it was a threat, the police would.
It was a threat, somebody, my thing is if somebody came here with a weapon, there is nobody to defend with a weapon here. But no, we didn't know that. My thing is, if somebody came here with a weapon, there is nobody to defend with a weapon here, but nope, we didn't know that.
At the time.
Right, they did, that's why they weren't there.
The police did.
That's a pretty different perspective, it's from our end versus.
The parents in their cars.
You're fine.
Right, you're fine.
And the, us in the building, cuz I kept saying to Don Marie, why do we not have an officer here? And she's like, I don't know. So like, we're all in the front of the building, and we're like, is this guy gonna come here with a gun? And we don't know, like, that's scary, um.
And we did talk about that, because, but we did, they, they explained that to us, like, you were fine, we were.
They knew that, but how were all those people in the building supposed to know that?
Can I ask this about a shelter in place?
I think it would've been a lock, I'm sorry, I'm so bad at interrupting.
No, you're not at all, actually.
Girl talk.
I think it would've been a lockdown if it was a threat, right? If they thought someone was coming, that's the difference, go ahead, sorry.
So I was gonna say about a shelter in place in a situation like that, um, wha, it, so, so you just stay exactly where you are, so, for instance, the parents in cars, why, why not move them in the building?
Because we can't, we can't let them in the building, then it's not a shelter in place.
Okay.
Right.
They.
They should, we were trying to tell them to go home.
Right, I was trying to tell them to go elsewhere.
Of course, their kids are inside.
I know.
Whoa, cuz we don't know what's going on, I wouldn't leave.
I wouldn't either, but I'm just saying, we had people, Julie, we had people physically standing outside the door, literally out of their car, we're like, get out, go in your car.
Oh, jeez.
I was picking my kid up, so I got stuck in the building, cuz MJ was slow.
But actually, and those people outside of their cars were safe, but.
They were safe, but we didn't, well, the school didn't know, so we were like, get in your car, like, they're just standing outside the school, and we're like, we know we're all sheltered in place inside. You're out here, like, this can't be safe.
So the difference in between, did they speak to shelter in place versus a lockdown? If, if there was a situation like that and there were all those community members in their cars, would then, did they speak to that if that did?
No, we did, we didn't speak to them, but I can pretty much, I mean, if those folks, let's say the same thing happened and it was a total lockdown. This piece of communication, this is like, drive away, drive, you know, drive away from the building.
Beyond the property.
Drive, right, just like.
And then parents.
They've gotta go.
Yeah, I know, that's the challenge.
But the other piece of that is, I think in that case, I know in that case the police would be there, again, speaks to what you're saying, getting those people away from the building.
They never would've made it that far.
However you can get out of there.
Got it.
And probably the state police would've been there, they would've had backup resources, if that was the case, so. Yeah, clearly they knew the situation was under control, but nobody else did.
Yeah, but that's what you want.
Yeah, it just stinks that you don't know.
I know, waiting, you don't know.
Well, you have no idea, yeah, and obviously parents were freaking out, but then once.
It's overwhelming at the time.
It's overwhelming at the time, but then, yeah, cuz you're just like, oh, what's going on, like, is somebody in the school, somebody outside the school, someone in the woods? People were looking in the woods, I mean, it was just chaos.
And I think it was nice you sent the follow-up email to, um, well, all the emails that you sent, I thought were great, but the last one about, um, the kids on the bus, cuz there was chatter about that. The kids were on the bus, so I think that was good that you wrote to me.
Well, and that unfolded from our conversations and subsequent conversations, because we still, that information, we still didn't realize that.
Yeah.
I mean, that came out yesterday, no, two days.
Two days ago?
I feel like.
Day before yesterday, yeah, right?
I know, two days ago, so we did, I mean, that's truth, you know?
Right, right.
So, that, I don't want.
But people appreciate, you know, because the district hasn't, they haven't been the best communicators for many years.
Yeah.
Um, so, so people appreciate that, Carol, so thanks for that.